Call this regular meeting of the Southwest Looking Board of Education to order. It is 7:00 PM. We are in the Board of Education meeting room. Recognize our visitors, both here and online. If you'd like to stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Sorry, how are you?
Hi.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Jones, can you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Spindler.
Here.
Mr. Vincent.
Here.
Ms. Rizani.
Mrs. Engel.
Here. We have a quorum. We can continue. Public participation, was there any? Okay, thank you. Adoption of agenda. We have an agenda with multiple items. We need a motion, please.
Motion to adopt the agenda as...
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Motion passes. We have presentations. The first is Garman and Miller.
Okay. It's been kind of a more of a production month. There's not, I guess, a lot of pretty pictures to show at this time. Kurt South was unable to be here tonight. But an update on the Aetna project. There is a design meeting scheduled for June 25th. There's a mechanical meeting scheduled for July 17th. Technology meeting will be scheduled for July 31st. And then the interiors will be July 31st as well, with the SD submission happening at that time. So July 31st is when we will submit SD for Aetna. The artifacts meeting is still scheduled for June 26th. The elementary terrazzo revisions are collaborative with Robertson and Artic and the school, working on the terrazzo for the elementary school and then also for the high school. If you recall, we were going to be adding some additional terrazzo to the high school and to the elementary school. And in order to accomplish that, we needed to look at some of the designs and the colors. So we're going to be reading on that and collaborating with Robertson. The summer 2019 concrete sidewalks at Aetna, we're calling them the Summer 2019 Projects. The sidewalks at Aetna, the bus garage, the soccer, baseball, and softball fields are in process for completion. So that's the update from Kurt, almost every project that he's associated. Today, I was at Watkins Memorial High School. Myself and our interior designer, we did a complete tour of the facility. Took a lot of pictures, a lot of notes, just kind of continuing the planning and information gathering process, going through, looking at the rooms. She's excited to get started, so she'll be starting the, I guess, the preliminary space plan, just to kind of see how things are going to work out. We did complete the POR review last week, okay? So that gives her a document to be able to start. So that will come with some preliminary options. I would say within the next month or so. That way, we can sit down with the administration, that group that we sat down with, the POR, potentially do a review, go through it first pass, think any changes that we need to, and just kind of go through those designs and consider currently doing on Aetna. So the process is getting started on the high school, and it's going to be a lengthy process. It's going to be, you know, we're spending close to $21 million on the building. So it's going to be a nice project compared to Aetna where we're like five. We're excited to be going on that process. So that's really the update for the high school. And for the government, our update for who's who or times, any questions?
I have a question. Can you enhance what specifically is a part of the summer project with the soccer, baseball that you mentioned? What is it that we're doing?
Kurt didn't give me the update on that. He just let me know that the projects are in process.
Handicaps, that's the sidewalks.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You looked my way, you heard the voice from that.
Yeah.
The sidewalks at Aetna, we're going to actually remove the middle area as the buses come in. It's essentially disintegrated. We actually had an administrator walking on it, collapsed, stumbled, and...
Who was that?
Saw scars.
I believe there's video.
We're going to take it all the way out and use, what was it, 350? The real fine wants to kind of make it passable and then put parking lots to keep traffic going the right way. So we needed to do that for safety. And then on the inside, there's several patches of concrete that we need to do. So that's not as much the handicapped accessible, other than just safety accessibility for everyone. But the others are, as described, pathways to get to certain areas. She bounced right back up there.
Missed bounce though, right? You don't watch videos.
It's already on the internet. I mean, it's YouTube, it's everywhere.
We saw it on YouTube.
Yeah. It is viral.
As far as the other new high school, $5 million on that claim. Is there anything else that you have a question?
No, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks so much. All right. Presentation, Robertson Construction, please.
You should have received the, our monthly status reports. And this will be our first report in the, as we move forward through construction for the multiple projects. And I've asked both Bob and Rick to give me any input if you see things that should be changed or more information that you want to see in this report. Might have to point it out by this.
Button on right, left-hand side. If it goes to the one on the right-hand side, left-hand side. Ah, there we go. Left-hand side, we go back. Click the little button, use the laser. Okay, just don't aim it at anyone's eyes, please.
So information on the project team and who this report goes to. Table of contents. Executive summary on this, it gives us our calendar days left to complete the project. Scheduled work that we're working on during the month. Right now, in the previous month, we've got the elementary building pad completed. We are in the exciting process of the settlement monuments. We are in our third week of settlement. And so far, we have passed the first two weeks. We know we've got at least this week, they typically measure them every Thursday. So we'll see the results this Thursday. If those are good, there's a possibility they might skip the fourth, but we should be good for the one month that was accounted for to be able to start proceeding. So that's the big news at the elementary right now. We are starting our underground utilities. We've done some of the deep excavation out by Route 40 for our sanitary and our storm. We've also started bringing the storm back to the elementary. And at the same time, we've got a second pipe crew that's on site that is starting storm and sanitary from the elementary working back towards the bus loop. So hopefully, that will help our progress and get the utilities in before we get on the pad and really start maneuvering around the area. The only real obstacle out there right now, we still need the conform drawings on the elementary school before the contractors come on site. So they have time to absorb those before they get started. And the conform drawings are only the bid drawings with any addendums that we did during the bid period. So they have all the information in one place. So we don't overlook something or miss something that was added. On the high school, we are about five good days, six good days, away from being able to get to the settlement period, for a two-week period. Unfortunately, the rain this week, we glossed the whole week on the pad. We haven't been able to do anything, except some of the underground pipe. For the elementary, we're still planning, starting footers July 15th. And for the high school, starting footers on July 31st. As we go through, these are still pretty much in the infant stage. I wanted to give you just a snapshot of where the funds were and any changes that were experienced on site and what that does to the project budget. So the first one is the under contingency usage. Right now, this pipe chart is more or less empty. There's one little sliver out there where we've got some of the site work change orders that are pending. We'll show you both pending and executed change orders. So you see district exposure. And that was for the elementary, same for the high school. The reason these numbers are different when we talk about the site is we did them at a percentage. So there's approximately, any change order that goes to the site is 71% towards the high school and 29% towards the elementary. So to date, which is great for the elementary in total, we've got pending change orders of $10,000, which coming out of the dirt is typically where you have your most exposure. So that's a very positive sign. Also in the project, the CMR, the construction manager at risk, which is Robertson, we have our own contingency. Right now, we have not had to use that on anything to date. We probably will be using some of that for overtime on the site work crews and pipe crews. That if we can get decent weather, we'll probably push them to try to get more in before we start the footers. And those three charts are all for CMR contingency on the three different projects. None of that fund, none of those funds have been used to date. Under project schedule, really, we're still on track. We had some better production early until the rains really have shut us down this week. But our measurable is to get on the pads by our start dates and start those footers. Two-week look-aheads for the site improvement package. We are to complete the high school building pad and cut, go into monitoring, and continue with underground utilities. We're also trying to get some of the parking lots to grade, especially around the elementary. On the elementary school, we've had our pre-construction meetings with contractors. We're starting to finalize our baseline schedule. And we're in the submittal process. And for the high school, we're more at the point of issuing contracts to get into the submittals to start our pre-construction meetings. And then just a snapshot of submittals and RFIs. And this is information within the team of how we stand. The pipe chart at the bottom left shows the site improvement package submittals. Approximately 70% of them are approved. There's a portion in closeout and a portion that's outstanding, which is typical. RFIs, which is the contractors or us asking questions of the architect, those are all up to date and current.
Could you just explain what submittals are to me, so you're by your standards?
Submittals are what the contractors submit as far as the materials they're going to use on the site. So when they're going to put a piece of pipe in the ground, if it's a four-inch pipe that's plastic and certain wall thickness, they'll submit that pipe to us. We submit it to the architect. We both review it, make sure it's what they wanted or they specified within their documents. It's either returned as approved, or approved as noted, or rejected if it's the wrong material. So we go through that process until we handle all the materials that are going into the building to make sure that what was specified is what you're getting. Same thing for the elementary. It's a little bit further behind on the submittals. You'll see that most, 70% are still not submitted. But we do have some movement on that, and we're getting that going. RFIs, there's a couple out there that we're looking to get answers for, but not extreme. And the high school, again, is even further behind than the elementary. Quality control. Besides us looking at the site and watching the work going in place with Hill and Garman Miller, we also do pre-installation meetings. And you'll see that we've got probably 30 pre-installation meetings, which will be done before the contractor starts his work. That's after his submittals are approved. We know what he's using. We talk about, okay, how is it going to go in the right way? Do we need to do a mock-up of it to see what it's going to look like? What are the expectations, both from us and Garman Miller? And any of the questions that the contractor might have before he starts? So we'll do those before the contractors start in multiple trades in multiple pieces of work. Safety, to date, there's been no incidents on site. And then just a few shots of, unfortunately, the dirt. And I don't have a drone presentation to back me up this month, so... Typically, we'll try to give you some shots of the interior of the building and something that you can substantially see. But we're still working to get to that point. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but maybe a comment. It probably isn't necessarily for you, but maybe some folks in the room. This, the executive summary is really nicely laid out. And I was wondering if maybe we could put something, some version of that on our website for maybe the public to look at? Because the last update there is kind of old. So it would be helpful if people want to go see something. That seems like a nice summary to throw up there.
When was the last update?
I think it was like in September or October.
Do you have information to use it?
Or maybe develop something utilizing that, you know...
There might be a few things that I would change if we're going to put it on the website.
And it doesn't have to be this whole document. Maybe just portions of that, like, what are we doing this month? And what are we expecting to, you know, something? Something a little more, throw some dirt pictures up, I don't know.
If we can pull some pieces from this. Because this is great. I'm assuming, is this something we're going to get every month?
From here on out, the next five years.
You have to be dry dirt pictures.
Um, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, this is wonderful, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I go after these guys, and he's enough fun for her. But I do want to run down through this. As Brian was talking, we're sort of moving from trying to get all those drawings out and all those contracts together to move to the next two schools. And we are seeing some work on site still as we're getting ready to get started. Started. Aetna Elementary is going through their designing. And we're going to start working with some schools then. The milestone data, you can get a much better picture of those from your senior pepperes. But we did our work underway with the site practice meeting, school and high school, and the design work for the next two schools. We really, the biggest upcoming task that we have to do as far as program-wise, is we will need to start reconciling estimates again and doing basing. And so those are going to start coming soon, end of July for the first one. So everybody located, they'll have a month to do that estimate. Hopefully, we'll be back here August, September, October. And I always have to be Debbie Downey talking about this. Potential schedule impact, the weather, it's not great. Permitting, we still have permits outstanding, where did you get them?
We have a permit for the high school.
Okay, so we got that last week.
We just have a little correction on our...
Okay, so that's great. We'll have estimate budget reconciliation, GMP negotiation for the next two. I always tell you about the allowances for the later package. And financial status. Rick and I have been sharing information. You get the commitment list every two weeks. Here is currently $84 million committed. So that includes your song cost contracts with your architect and us. And you're looking at the tab, please, looking out about what should you bake to these. And there are a few photographs here. Mine are probably older than mine, because Mike didn't really get it. But it was dry that day. Right there, any force?
Except for Rick, if we're $84 million committed, is that where we should be right now?
Yeah. Other than the, I'll tell you $2.9 million that we agreed to put in, lower budget for the elementary. Other than that, we're on budget.
Okay.
All right. Julie, is this also something that could go on the web page?
I think so.
When we asked about the progress, if this is a financial item, I'm sure footers would be just as interested.
I think that that is up to how much you want to share.
Well, it's publicly put on, since it's public record.
Yeah.
We can consolidate it into more of a summary. Or we could, this comes straight out of your budget. It's just a copy paste out of its own budget. So I mean, you can talk about that Wednesday, but yeah. I think we just summarize it pretty good.
Sounds like you guys want some things on, so financial and update for me too.
I mean, I agree with you on the other part. That's a lot of money to get under contract, designed under contract.
Absolutely.
So this is a lot of money. I think that's really a lot of money.
Yeah.
But that's supposed to be a lot of money.
Yeah.
It's really hard to get there. I think you ought to tell your own mom.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. We have our, we need our annual report on restraint and seclusion.
It's not really a presentation, because our policy says for me to provide unit letters. But I provided all the board members the same letter. It has both on there the hazing and bullying separated from the restraint and seclusion. That's being reported, we do it twice a year, although it needs to go on the webpage. You can see, there's the total reported for the year on the left, and that's divided, if you're looking at the restraint-seclusion, which I call the front, you can see what it is in the fall and then what it is in the spring. And then on the backside, or the front side, however you want to look at it, you can see the total number of hazing and bullying to the left, the substantiated and unsubstantiated in the spring and the fall. Remember, in January, we also gave you half of this. So this is a complete form of it. And it will also be placed on the webpage for the public to see. Any questions? People reported it to me or present?
I do. In Kirkersville, can I have some examples of what the reports are for hazing and bullying?
It's a lot of it. It's more kiddos that are consistently bothering other kids at recess over a period of time. And that was the main, we called it, with the mid, mid, four, this five, this, that. And it was the same student with multiple.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
So with the middle school, why has it always traditionally been so much more than all the other schools?
No.
Okay.
Yes, I, I wouldn't say this was a pattern. I'm a little weird.
A lot of times, it's what's reported to by the kids. And now the emphasis now is if you see something, to say something. So hopefully, you know, it's always been present, unfortunately. But maybe if it becomes more reported, then we can deal with it better. And maybe the numbers will begin to go down.
I'm sorry, I'm having a little, I'm not a math major, but I'm having a little bit of problems with the math at Kirkersville. 12 total reported. Four in the fall were unsubstantiated, eight in the spring. That equals 12. There's one off, though, like, there's five that were. So there's like, maybe the total reported should be 13? Okay, just checking. And that's the only one I've actually done the math on, so... Nine and eight is 17. Yeah. It should be 17. Yeah. It should be.
So we'll verify that math before we put it on the web.
For the middle school, because it's so high, is there a way to delineate grades?
I was wondering that, too.
Do you report, or cannot?
Can you give an idea, can you give us any kind of idea of where the problems are? Sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, where are they? Or is it across all?
Sixth grade is a major culprit.
So we should expect high numbers for the next two years?
Well, I'm hoping, no.
Okay.
Hey, no, we're thinking through and thinking about things to address those concerns. I'm hoping that this is an ethical year, absolutely.
Did we see similar numbers last year for fifth graders coming out of Aetna? Do we know? Can we check?
Tony, do you remember?
They were a little higher than years past.
Okay.
I wouldn't say as high, but again, they're not dealing with seventh and eighth graders all the same time as well. So I think it's a little bit different of an environment in elementary.
How often is Deputy Varell in the middle school?
I quantify it two, then three days a week. I mean, it's just, it's random. I mean, I don't, there's no set structure. I feel like, unfortunately, Mr. Tancheski and I monopolize a lot of Deputy Varell's time.
Right.
And it's tough, I mean, I'll chime in. I mean, he has the office at the high school, he'll be there. Usually, he's out in the parking lot in the mornings or in the back as kids are getting dropped off. And then, just depending on the day. Now, we're incorporating some things with him, more speaking to groups, small groups. For example, we have band camp getting ready to start here in July. We already have it on Deputy Varell's calendar to address them in terms of just kind of behaviors, you know, the typical, the texting and things like that, things that might get kids in trouble. We're going to try to do that with the various sports teams. We're also going to have to try to address parent groups, too, as well. So, I mean, with us, it's almost as needed. I mean, there's times where I see him, he's there. And other times where the cruiser is gone, and I'm assuming he's at that nowhere.
What are the different things you guys are looking at to get this under control? Anything right now, or are you just in the dark phase?
I mean, I prefer not to speak, I mean, there are, we're considering home visits for some of our
Okay.
most at risk, that would probably, that's the quote-unquote "most extreme" thing we're thinking of. There are other, there are a lot of other things that we need to tweak.
Okay.
As usually, but both the PBIS side of things, but also on the discipline side of things.
Also...
We brought in a speaker toward the end of the school year, Kentrell Skene, who I thought did a fantastic job. We would like to continue that relationship as we start a new school year. And he came in, I think he came in at least one or two other times after that, just for like lunch, to hang out. to hang out. And I feel like that would be also a great positive connection for some of our students. And we're working with the high school, I'll, I'll chime in and steal. We've already had conversations with the high school to have some of their peer mentors that potentially get out of school early, who could come down and mentor some of our students.
Yeah, we've, yeah, I talked with Ryan and with Katie. I've got three kids right now and we didn't want to start large. So I told, you know, talk to them about identifying probably some at-risk kids, three to five of their most at-risk kids within the sixth grade cohort. I've got three students who have volunteered, all going to be seniors. I'm looking for two more. They all have early release. We're going to talk to their, you know, talk to their parents, get a parent release and kind of put together where they could be positive role models for the kids. They'll go down there, I mean, if they choose, they can go every day. And then maybe once a month, try to get those kids come up to the high school kind of in a more positive environment. We'll feed them lunch and things like that. So it's, it's just something we're trying. And I didn't want to start with too large a group, so we're going to start with about three to five kids. And I mean, they could maybe have influence over a larger group in classrooms and things like that. But we'll definitely involve parents in terms of getting releases, so the parents know what's going on.
So one of the things as administrative team, we talked about also is the fact that we do a lot of push at the beginning of the year. And as some of these examples are showing, we feel that a continuous, you know, repeated, you know, maybe each quarter, each semester, that we get into the different buildings and reemphasize that message, not only with bullying, restraint, but also some of the other fighting, bringing inappropriate things to school, it might be knives or whatever it might be, and remind them that it's important not to do those type of things. Now, again, we're hoping that all of these put together will help to reduce the, the numbers as you were asking, you know, what are some of the things we're going to attempt to do and those, those kind of items we've talked as a group.
The middle school and the high school both have already started the TFI process. The PBIS, the NATA consultant out of the state of Ohio. TFI is a tiered fidelity inventory for your PBIS. And so they come in and they look benchmark by benchmark about where we are. We had a team from the middle school and high school come in on their own time in the summer and met with the state consultant and they walked out and they're, they were very invigorated because they're like, what else can we do, what else can we do? And when they left the room, they had ideas that they had never thought of before about what it is we can do to really focus in on where we need to grow and where our, what our strengths are, but where, where can we still grow? And like involving students at the secondary level in your PBIS planning and teams and incentives and getting out the message, for example, like anti-bullying. If kids put out the message, the research is out there, it is much more received than if adults are telling them that. And so how do we incorporate kids and get them in on this planning and their parents? And make sure their parents are on the same page as we are. So they started that this summer and that's going to be continued effort throughout the school year for PBIS, which goes into all these issues.
I'm wondering, you had mentioned that you were, you know, bringing Officer Burrell into the band camp and so on and so forth. And you, you, we've obviously had this issue with the sixth grade. Maybe we need to get Officer Burrell starting with the text message, so on and so forth, at the fourth grade and the fifth grade instead. Okay, that's what I'm like, maybe we need to mention that. Right, okay, and pathways.
Or anti-bullying, but also victim empowerment.
Yes, okay.
That we did at the end of, well, it was kind of in the middle of last year. We're doing it right at the beginning.
Okay.
So we're trying harder to set them up for success in this building, but you know, I mean, that's what we're working on.
Right, sure.
And when we go through our TFI, is that what it's called? Tiered, whatever she says, those letters. When we go through that inventory, we're going to find our weaknesses too, which are having an effect. I mean, let's face it, it has a domino effect on the next level.
Okay.
We definitely want to be the start off, get them ready.
Great, thanks. I know that some districts have the, the sixth grade meeting. I've seen the stuff on, on the webpage and everything about what you're going to be experiencing coming into sixth grade. Know that some districts have like a come to Jesus meeting with their sixth graders and their parents.
We do that.
Do we do that?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm going to get the come to Jesus meeting?
Yes.
Okay, good, yeah.
And the police come in.
Good.
The police come in and say, listen, if you send naked pictures and, you know, I mean, they scare the bejesus out of them.
They do.
So, yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
I'm thinking a quick summary would do that. I think you're finding out through a variety of attempts that the administration has talked about, that nobody's satisfied with, with high numbers.
Right.
But we do want the kids, as we mentioned before, to report. So, you know, it's not a bad thing. It gets you to do the things that are happening here.
Right.
We do want to draw the numbers down, but the administrative team has worked very, very hard. We meet quite frequently to try to put in the things that you were questioning tonight so that things can get better, so.
And there will be more guidance councils at the middle school next year too, correct?
We've added an additional council. And we also did at the elementary, so. Try to put resources in there.
Okay. Going back to the middle school numbers, was there a trend at all as far as what type of bullying? Is it online hallway stuff or?
No, I mean, that's the thing. Sometimes, sometimes it's picking on stop. Sometimes it's physical. Social media is a problem and I, I think the come to Jesus conversation, what we mean to have with parents is that the school can't solve all that.
Right.
That parents have to take control of the devices in the evening hours. And so it's, right now, Mr. Vence is, is crossing the board.
Okay.
And I think what Mr. Jones is saying is, see something, say something is definitely having an impact. I mean, kids are reporting.
Right.
And you know, last month, we quietly talked about it, but we, we had other issues in the handbook we discussed, but the middle school is implementing the technology break for the students where they're supposed to turn it off, although they, they will be able to carry it right now. We'll, we'll be looking at that and seeing how that goes. I know the high school is going to be doing some surveys to see how that phase is in the following year, but we hope that that kind of alleviates the in-school sending messages to and from kids. So hopefully, again, we're consistent on enforcing that and making sure that we have taken a break.
That was going to be my question is how, how are we going to document when, whether or not people, kids are taking a break? I mean, how are we going to, are we going to keep track? Certainly that we told them to take a break, but fifty percent did not.
Well, they're not supposed to have.
We will track any kind of cell phones confiscated.
That's what I want to hear.
That's always tracked.
That's what I want to hear.
So that, it'll be tracked. So we'll build how many cell phones we've confiscated. And I'm hoping my safe doesn't fill up with them when parents, oh, they don't get them.
And Mrs. Perkins could share that we also have some rules for the elementaries to try to alleviate that also. So that was all put in and again, the high school is going to do some surveys. I, I think we all read about what happened at Bexley in regards to their survey. So I think, I think it's good that Mr. Tancheski is going to take that step. And the lower kids can get used to it in the high school. It'd be like second nature, let's put that away.
And we were at the Lincoln, uh, Our Futures in Lincoln County, they talked about, I mean, they, the county survey showed that, that these kids don't, I mean, there's no parental control.
None.
So it's tough to, I mean, we're going to be implementing controls at the parents.
But they don't do themselves, okay.
Yeah.
And just to reiterate, we are going to get the calculators needed for the students that need them, correct?
When I first, you're being warned.
All right. Send it through, Rick.
Requesting this budget to increase it for the calculator.
Just to back up a few conversations to the, Alyssa mentioned something about the victim empowerment. I did just want to comment, I knew that at Petascola, they did a program with, I believe it was a handful of kids, a, a, a girls empowerment type group towards the end of the year that seemed pretty successful. Anyone? I liked it.
I know they, our guidance council was full of clubs, yeah, like girls empowerment. We actually ran clubs last year and one of them was focused on, on girls.
And I think, I guess the comment that I might need to make is, they worked through some of the girls that may have needed to be in that club and pulled them into it, which I thought was awesome.
Yeah. Yeah, we had a gentleman's club as well. I mean, not.
I think I see the problem. I think I see what's happening.
It started you.
The truth is, it came out.
Detective Burrell at Petascola.
It all makes sense now.
First the back.
Anyway, thanks. Well, thank you.
Was there anything else?
Anything else, board members? Let's see, request to speak on agenda items, Teamsters 413 and South Post-Lincoln Education Association. All right, we have approval of minutes from May 16 and June 12. Either one or both of those, we need a motion to approve.
Motion approved for A and B.
Second. Any discussion? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vence?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. That motion passes. We have five A, the financial report. Can I have a motion to approve and then we can discuss?
Motion to approve, five A.
Second. All right, Mr. Jones?
Clicked on your computer is a copy of executive summary for the month of May 31st, 2019. It was a fairly routine month. Year date, our receipts are up by about three hundred eighty-five thousand or one percent. And our expenditures are above budget by twenty-nine thousand dollars. So overall for the year, about three hundred fifty-six thousand ahead of where we anticipate being with one month ago. So I anticipate that trend to keep going, so. There's really nothing unusual about this month, but so far, year date, we've been doing very well.
Good.
Glad to answer any questions you have about any of it.
Any questions? Okay, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vence?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
That motion passes. All right, executive session. I need a motion to adjourn into executive session to consider the employment of a public employee.
So moved, second.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vence?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
We are in executive session at seven forty-two.
Bob, watch.
We will be.
All right, we'll hold this meeting to order at 8:29. We are back from executive session. Mr. Jones, will you call the roll please?
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mrs. Finler.
Here.
Mr. Vincent.
Here.
Mr. Zanni.
Mrs. Engel.
Here. We have a quorum. We can continue. We have number seven, the person who is going to be presenting today. We have number seven, the personnel consent calendar. Items A through J. We need a motion to approve one or all of those.
Motion to approve all of those.
Second.
Any discussion?
We're still working really hard on filling all the openings.
Yeah. Do we still have a lot left?
No, we have one second grade. It's gonna be all.
Do we have the Spanish today?
We got one accepted and open up a little more in harmony.
Good. All right. Sounds good.
I think we heard back there, we have a secretary position and dispatcher.
Oh, that's our teacher. We have two separate days.
Okay. And we got German.
No.
We got a Germany ASL.
Yeah, oh yeah, we did.
Germany ASL. Nice. All right.
And we will have another teacher position once we fill the instructional portion after next week. If you said something over the next semester term.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. Any more discussion? Okay. Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. Passes. We have multiple business items. We need to take these individually, I would think. Mr. Jones, yes?
Yeah, probably good, yes.
Okay. So, item A is fleet liability, property and umbrella insurance coverage. We need a motion to approve that. So moved. I'll second that. Any discussion?
No, we haven't. We only got quotes. I tried to list in the administrative area the three quotes that were received. Obviously, ENC is a new insurance carrier for us, but they came in lowest price. So, we're recommending that we stay with, I mean, move to ENC with the insurance and with the same coverage. Actually, there was a couple buildings that were missed. We just found out like a weight room in a high school and a storage room.
Oh, wow.
So, our new insurance consultant caught that.
Oh, good.
That was added here, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's stuff that was missed in the past. So, that's all cut it now, so it's still a good price. So, I'm asking the board to please approve ENC as a new insurance for one year.
Great. Great. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
That passes. B, we have the resolution of necessity for the substitution of an emergency tax levy.
Motion approval A to B.
Second.
Discussion?
Just, this is what we talked about last month. It's basically our emergency operating levy expires at the end of this year, last year of assessments this year, last year collections, next year 2020. So, it has to be renewed before December 31st, 2020, or we lose money. So, we are going back on the ballot if the board approves this in November for a substitute levy, which would actually allow the emergency operating levy amount to grow for new construction only. For existing property tax owners, it should not have an effect. Their tax rate should stay the same. Only the ones who've, only new buildings will actually start paying the same amount of existing pay instead of getting a tax break. So, this is the same dollar amount, it's 4.525 million dollars. And we're going for a continuing period of time. We've done five years, this one's for a continuing period of time. And again, it should be no increase in mileage whatsoever for existing taxpayers.
No increase.
No increase.
Yes. No increase in taxes for existing taxpayers. All right.
All right.
Any more discussion? Questions? Call the roll.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes. That passes. C, we have update regarding the food service program, Senate Bill 210 compliance. Do we need a motion for that?
No, it's just.
Or do we just need an FYI, right? Okay. All right. And then we have proposed lunch pricing for 2019-2020.
The House Bill 210, real quickly. Again, that's a set of rules that our cafeteria has to follow. Again, we are making some changes in the cafeteria, so at least at this particular time, our previous food service director wanted me to convey to the board that House Bill, I'm sorry, Senate Bill 210 has been met.
Okay.
Sorry for interrupting, but it almost looked like somebody wanted somebody to say something on that.
No, I don't have anything good to say.
No, no. And then, so, any other questions on Senate Bill 210?
No.
Okay. And how about new lunch prices? Do we have a motion to approve the proposed lunch prices for 2019-2020?
I have a motion to approve increase of lunch prices by 15 cents.
I will second that. Do we have any discussion?
Just, Mr. Jones, have we gotten any numbers for the end of this year? I know what was forecasted back in the fall.
I checked right now, our current fund balance is $99,522. We still have at least, well, we have one more payroll left, which is probably in the 30,000 to 40,000 dollar range, so, you know, talking about only ending at $550,000 maybe, and basically, we're usually in the hundreds of thousands of dollars range. And then next year, the final year, the two-step increase is kicking in, so at some point, it's again two steps because of the frozen step, so there is a big concern that without this lunch increase, then we will definitely be negative next year.
But with the lunch increase, we should be?
Hopefully, I don't know exactly, hopefully it'll be better. I'm not sure it's gonna be completely positive. We've still got two-step increases in 15 cents. It's all come down to lunch participation. You know, if we can somehow figure out a way to get more participation, more money coming in, the 15 cents is definitely going to help. And it's something I encourage the board to approve. But again, we still got one more payroll to end this fiscal year. And then we still have really July and one of August before we start getting more money, so. But I think it's something that's definitely needed, and then hopefully with our new food service director and being full-time, that we can make some progress and some, start moving in the right direction in the near future.
So, you said it won't be for sure, the 15 cents won't be for sure enough, and you won't know that until when?
I probably have a better idea, or definitely this year. I can have a better idea budget-wise, once I get the budget done for next year.
I just don't want six months from now, or three months from now, to have another increase since we just did this.
No, I think this is gonna be for a year. The reason we kind of did mid-year last year is because we didn't do it in January, when the first asked, so, or last fall, so this will be a one-time only. We won't be asking for another one, but there may be a chance the general fund will have to kick in next year. I just don't know at this time.
But we didn't have to kick in any general fund.
Right now, no, at this time, we won't have to kick in anything for this year, even though I had a hundred thousand dollars budget. So, that's a good thing. And then we are changing, you know, we did reduce hours this year for staff, staff members, and that's what was staying the same next school year also. So, we're hoping we're gonna move in the right direction, but we're gonna give, you know, this pickering time to really see what's going on and getting better. But I'm hoping we'll be in a better position, but I expect this to probably kick in some next year, but hopefully, those 15 cents will make it better. I can give you, I can give you some estimates, you know, at least where I think revenue is gonna be, expenditure is gonna be at in October. Will I do the budget for you?
Okay.
Now it gives a good idea where we're at.
Yeah, thank you.
Sounds good. Okay. Any more questions?
No.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
All right, that motion passes. We have item E, some school buses. Need a motion to approve purchase of up to four school buses at a cost not to exceed $345,000 from Cardinal Bus Sales and Service, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Right now, we're only planning on buying three, and the combination is we gotta figure out, because there's been possibly maybe getting three 72 passenger, or maybe two 72, and maybe a smaller one, it's just been what, you know, Mr. Jones works out with our transportation director. But also, in the new budget, there's right now $20 million for new bus purchases for school districts.
Oh.
If there's a chance that we can get some of that money, then we'll try to get a fourth bus, because like I mentioned, we have about 50 buses, so three buses a year, we have probably about 16, 18-year replacement cycle, that's a long time. Really gotta get to four buses a year, which will get us somewhere in the 12 to 13 range, I think is a more reasonable replacement period. So, we're hoping definitely get three, but hopefully a fourth one, if we can get some school funds, some money from the state to, anything to add to that, Mr. Jones?
No. We try to keep, well, I guess, yes. I always hate when people say no and then start talking, but, you know, we do try to keep the fleet at a minimal number, so that we're not over-investing in having buses sit out through the back of the parking lot, because it does cost to make sure that they're up to speed or up to snuff to be inspected and pass those tests. But we do have to have enough, should we have a breakdown. I should also mention that we are looking at doing some repairs at the bus garage. That garage is getting very tight with the number of buses, so if we don't trade in some buses, we may have to figure out how to keep them warm during the winter, because we do plug in our buses.
That's right.
So, there are some additional issues and concerns, but that's why we always look at whether we have three buses or four. And also, we want to make sure we're not trading in buses that have a lot of miles left, or the $500 or $1,000 that we might get, because you don't get much for a used bus. I think it's a good deal to add four, and then see what the state can kick in in that 20 million.
Yeah, absolutely. Great. Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. That motion passes. We have item F, the athletic handbook. We need a motion to approve the proposed changes.
Motion approval.
I will second that. I know we'll have some discussion.
Yes, please. Go ahead, I'll let you go first. I have some questions, and I'm not sure where, who can answer, but I'm assuming someone here can. The family passes, or the passes increase, and is a part of the proposed changes. And doing the math, the family pass increases by 22%, where the individual pass is increasing by 12% and the student pass by 13%. Why are we increasing the family pass so dramatically when the other two are going up by like $5 or $10 with such a lower percentage?
I think the biggest, I mean, I could try to answer it for you. I mean, the biggest reason, we gave out 100, we sold 101 family passes last year. 505 individuals used those passes. We are well under the majority of districts that, surrounding districts and other, yeah, that are comparable to us. So that, I mean, and we, and the biggest thing is officiating fees are going up, and this money is used to pay officiating fees.
Right.
And officiating fees are dictated by OHSA.
Right. So, the officiating fees went up like this year?
They've continually gone up. I don't, I can't remember if they went up this year, but I think.
It started last year.
Yeah.
Progressively, it's been higher and higher. And also, the fees for security has also increased as well. So, the intent of the passes is to make ourselves a little bit more comparable to various schools. We're still on the low end of our fees, but they're in the range.
So, the increase in the family price was made, just the decision to make that one so much larger of a jump was just basically to be in line with the other schools? Or was there a reason that those passes got the bigger jump?
Well.
Because it's $50 versus $5 is huge.
And remember, an individual pass, obviously, just not to diminish anything, I mean, that's one person, but a family pass could be up to eight or nine people.
Right.
So, I mean, that would be a 10.
So, yes. And then I may have had this question answered, but I'm gonna ask it just for the public to hear, but have we raised individual ticket prices? Because those aren't changing.
Yeah, we have, I mean, I care for our lesson.
We can't, we can't do that. That's all, those are all set. Those are standard prices set forth, approved by the LCL. So, ticket prices, whether it's JD or Mercy or whatever, it's the same wherever you go. Those are not, we're not allowed to pick our prices.
Okay. Thank you.
So, if they raise, it's because someone's making us raise them.
Gotcha. And are our individual gate ticket prices competitive with other schools? In asking that question, I'm thinking, should we go to the LCL and make that suggestion?
I mean, it's, our prices are comparable, it's not just, ooh, I put that in.
Because I paid like $9 to get in a pick room to me for a track meet.
How much?
Like nine.
Wow. They dictate all events for both middle school and high school prices.
But who is it, the?
Central district.
Oh, central district.
Central district.
Thank you.
It's not the LCL, it's the central district.
And then the LCL approves what the central district comes forward with the prices, so our prices should be comparable. If you're headed to.
Ooh, okay.
Franklin County, less people are going against what is being told.
Okay. Obviously, because I was just saying, I went to a track meet at Pick North this past spring, and I know I paid like $8 or $9 to get in.
Yeah, they shouldn't.
And I was like astonished.
They shouldn't be doing that. They should not be doing that.
Okay. It should be central district is X number of dollars, is what it's supposed to be. Okay.
And like, the OCC, I mean, I, you know, we don't know what kind of relationship OCC has with.
Yeah, I just was curious, because I was just thinking about that, like.
I mean, I'm sure there's a way.
The jump, the jump in the family price, the family pass is kind of hard to swallow, I think, what, just in comparing the jump in the other two. I understand that they're competitive across the other schools, and even on the lower end of that.
As a point of discussion, I looked at that, and I, Mrs. Morelli and I talked about this today, and I don't know that I'm going to do it or not, but I'm thinking about allowing family passes to encompass not only athletic contests, but also all school events. So, I'm thinking about that. I mean, it wouldn't be many things, I mean, we charge for play, we charge for some concerts and things like that, so we're not really talking about it.
A huge amount of that.
A huge amount, but it would kind of be a little bit more incentive for some families. So, and we could, you know, we'll talk more about that and kind of bring it in over the summer and incorporate it into the fall.
If we did that, would some of the money be siphoned off to be given to those programs?
Well, in those programs, I don't know how many kid, how many people would be affected by that, but a lot of times, if those programs need money, they will generally come to me, and I find money in the principal's fund, and I subsidize. I mean, play, I know for the winter play, you know, they need your money, so I take care of that.
Okay.
I don't think it's a huge amount. I mean, if ever it comes, then we can kind of discuss that, how we can share funds.
Okay. All right, I think I'm done for now, but I might, I gotta think for a minute.
I just had some technical boarding questions that maybe need just to be tweaked a little bit more, so there's no, no question. In the code of conduct, when it says the athlete is penalized if they have an issue, if they do something and they're penalized at the next competition, I wanted to make sure that people understood if the next competition happens to be rained out or snow delay, that doesn't count.
Correct.
It goes to, so maybe just put a little clause, if the next competi, this doesn't count as the missed competition.
Yeah.
Also, in the code of conduct, I was confused on, it says, it starts on the, it encompasses the entire year, including summer, but then a couple statements, a couple sentences down, it says, student's first day of participation. And I didn't want anyone to have any kind of confusion. If you're playing sports, it's the entire year.
Yes. And I think part of it is that they were talking about the spring.
Right.
And that's where the, I mean, we can clarify it, but.
Just a little, so they know really truly we mean the entire year.
Clarify those two.
And then the other one that Bob had brought up earlier, with the chain of command section, and I, I'm just gonna throw this out there, this is not something that I am gonna pound my fist on, but it talked about the different steps that you go to the higher, you know, the, obviously, the chain of command. And it stopped at district administration, I believe, and I didn't know if we should say the final chain of command is the board or not. Like I said, this is not the hill I'm gonna die on. I just want people to understand that there is a chain of command. It's not, I'm upset with the coach, I'm gonna go to the board, but it is all these different steps, like I said.
And I responded back, and I can certainly respect that particular position. There are a couple instances in the handbook where if it's an academic situation, they pull certain dip together, so there's an appeal process, so there's a line of command that kind of deviates off that, the normal path, but very much like a suspension in school. When the suspension is issued, there's a message given that, you know. When the suspension is issued, there's a message given that, you know, you can appeal. So where I, I went is that as administrators, we, we like to take care of the issue so that it doesn't get to the board. But when it gets to, to my particular position, if they're not satisfied, they are given the opportunity to, to address the board with all the public participations. But I do like the idea, I do like the point that if a parent calls a board member at the very beginning, that it makes it easier to point out that, you know, you're supposed to start at the lowest level with the coach and maybe the AD, or if it's not the coach during the season, it's the AD and the principal, or however that particular system goes. So I am kind of torn a little bit because I don't want to put more work on the board. That's my job and our job to do. So I, I'm, I guess I'm open, but I certainly feel that it's my job to stop things and to, to make good decisions. And if not, then they have a right to appeal, very much like expulsions and so forth. So that's, that's where I'm at with that. I mean, I certainly will respect, if you want to put it on there, but it's my job not to have it get that far.
I'm kind of with Deb, I'm not going to like stomp my fist at this, but I feel like people should always have the option if they've exhausted all efforts to come, but they can do that at any public meeting, so that's why I wouldn't stomp my fist.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good either way.
I think the board's had a wonderful job over the last three or four years of giving the public a tremendous number of opportunities. They can request it 72 hours, they can come in five minutes before, they can be at the beginning, they can be at the end. So I, I think that's there, but again, it's what you guys are comfortable with. Again, I'm just going to say it's my job to try to do those things.
I can leave it as is, I got no problem with that. I have one other one that might result in some discussions, also in the code of conduct.
I wonder, Deb, if simply instead of listing that, that maybe just a message somewhere that just says that, you know, we believe that, you know, your voice should be heard, we appreciate, or, you know, the, I guess, the game plan of the district, to start at the, the basic level. And I don't know if that just can be enhanced, that, hey, if you have an issue during the season, here's who you should talk to. And then, hopefully encourage them to start at that lowest level.
My other question was if I'm playing, if I'm running cross country and I do something really, really bad, code of conduct bad, but then I want to run track in the spring, is, would, would there be anything that I could do that is so bad that we would say you can't run track?
Oh, there's probably-
Well, this entire calendar year.
Yeah, I mean, that's what-
I, I can think of, yeah, I would, I would never say never.
Okay.
And is that addressed in here?
I, I'm not sure that that's really addressed. And I, I like the, the appeal process that we have that, that determines whether somebody's going to play. It may be if somebody does something really, really bad, they go through a similar thing like that. In, in my email, I said, keep in mind that, you know, if something is really, really bad, it still may not be pursued by law enforcement. But if we're saying that sports is a privilege, is there, you know, is there that, this is really, really, really bad and-
That it can keep you, that-
I could almost flip that, that sometimes we're in a situation where the school is not even involved in a situation and it's done by law enforcement. And we're kind of stuck in the position of, okay, this is what happened, but it didn't happen at school. Is that maybe where you're going?
Yeah, well, that too, that's, that's mentioned in here as well, right?
She brought up, maybe the school does it by law enforcement.
Yeah, it does, that does have something to do with it.
If the school does it, if it's that bad, Mike or Ryan or whoever the principals are are going to make a recommendation for an expulsion. And that takes you out 80 days, which is a complete semester. And you're eliminated from all activities, from the grounds and everything. So if it's really, really bad at school, the process should be, the discipline coincides with the athletics. But there may be examples that you're thinking of that are severe that wouldn't, wouldn't do an expulsion.
But what, but what she's saying is, okay, so you were expelled, you were out, but it was re, it was really bad. So should you be allowed to then be on the track team in the spring?
After you serve.
After you come back, I think is what you're saying, right?
Yeah. You mean like lifetime ban?
No, I mean like that year.
Well, I feel like, I feel like it's all already included. If you're doing something bad in one sport and you get the third offense and you're, you're denied a participation, isn't that encompassed in that not being able to do track because you're already out of participation for a year? If it's bad enough to warrant really bad and you get to the third offense or even, you know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah.
I think that-
I guess I assumed it would be encompassed in that one-year suspension.
Is it so bad?
If it's that bad, if it's that bad.
You skip steps?
Yeah.
I think that, I think that you're, you're going to have to decide if the school is a place that gives kids chances.
Right.
Because you said, Kathy, Kathy brought up, is it a lifetime ban?
Right.
And I think that's maybe what needs to be discussed because I, I look at it as there's things in place. The, the state says the maximum period of time for doing this offense, certain offenses can be up to 80 days, a knife can be up to a year. So those are in place. So does this district, does the board want additional time on top of that and take away the extracurriculars? I think that's, I think, I read exactly what Kathy did. Are you asking for a ban?
No.
Above and beyond-
I think, I misread it. I think the, the, what I was trying to say was it's already encompassed in this one-year thing, but I think Deb's original question is, on your first offense, is it so bad that warrants being-
Right.
Going to the one-year?
Right. That's what, that's what, yeah.
Like, if you do something so bad that like-
So bad, on your first year.
On your very first.
On your very first offense.
Can I ask what's real bad because it, it does, the, first time you bring a knife, you're going to be recommended for expulsion, you face a year out. So if you, I, I guess I'm trying to understand what is severe that wouldn't require Mike or Ryan to recommend.
That's what you're saying.
I, I, I don't know where I would, because some, I mean, I'm just thinking of things as having alcohol, drugs, fighting, assault, things like that.
But that's not actual-
We, we take care of that through the process of, of, you know, school discipline.
Twelve months a year.
Okay.
I don't know what-
But I think it's a great question. I mean, it needs discussion.
Okay, so let's-
Especially, yeah, it could happen in the summertime.
Right, but that's still, that still encompasses it because you said, once you're, once you're an athlete.
Now, I'll back up on that. If it happens during the summer, there's a lot of times that's not school-related, so we're not, we're not doing an expulsion.
Yeah.
Right, right. So you didn't, you didn't, you didn't issue the expulsion.
No, we didn't even discipline for that.
Right, right.
That's, that's, that's a catch right there.
Yeah.
You would maybe do the athletic discipline and that's where you have to decide whether it's severe or not.
Right, correct. And, and it's, and it's the first offense.
We're banned.
It's the first offense, extremely bad.
Bad.
Egregious. Egregious.
I would like to-
Super bad.
I would definitely leave it, I would like to leave it as open, you know, to us have the flexibility to make that decision depending on, on the incident or-
How do, yeah, but how do you, and, and if you leave it at that open, how do you show that you're not playing favorites? Yep. And that's why I thought maybe you, you've got the appeal process thing set in place, perhaps that is something that would come to, you know, the, however many people are sitting in a room.
Yeah, I mean, we could do, we could do an athletic, you know, field, I guess, an athletic appeals committee.
We have, you have a couple of them set up for some things in the handbook.
I've heard of several appeals from parents.
Academic is a lot of times one of those.
Yeah, that's your, that it's super bad, you're automatically out, but it can be appealed.
It can be appealed.
Yeah.
There just has to be a few parameters on what super bad means.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I'm still a little confused myself.
I'll give my coach's phone number. Yes.
I can think of a lot of-
A felony, a felony is a good answer, yes, that's right, Mr. Jones.
So I mean, is that something I'll take to Lisa to get?
Yeah, I just kind of more of a-
Kind of courts move excessively slow.
I know.
So if you're waiting on the court to judge whether it's a felony, there may be a charge, but it may not be substantiated.
I know.
So then we get into a legal battle.
Yeah, we'll get into a legal battle. I mean, I just, we're, we're setting the precedent and saying, this is a privilege and, you know.
It's an extracurricular.
When you put that jersey on, you are, you know, it, it's almost like, yay, this is, I earned it, I earned it and I should act this way. And you're representing our school with that jersey on.
Why not just enforce the same rules? If you violate something during the summer, you may not be suspended, but the discipline that you would have received could be delegated by the group. So even though the school not be, be able to expel you, athletics can expel you because during the school year, Mike or Ryan would recommend him for expulsion. So they, they continue. If there's an offense during the summer, there's a fight between the teammates.
It's a privilege.
I mean, that's consistency year-round.
Without having it in front of me, I mean, we'd have to go look at, we just got to look at wording and go back and forth, I'm like, we could, we could draft something.
But even with that, unless the student said something happened during the summer, how would we know?
We, there'd be plenty, plenty of-
There'd be plenty of, of, we don't know.
Yeah.
There's plenty during the school year too, we don't find out, unfortunately.
True, true.
Unless some kids tell.
Okay.
So we go anywhere with this?
He's going to check.
He's going to check, work on a little bit. But we probably need to approve, or can we approve status as is? Because we're, our athletes, well, we have one more month, right?
Have another month.
Because the athletes begin at the end of July.
Yep, yeah.
So if we table this, would it be on the-
It could be a bit further than that, but, you know, everybody else, except a couple weeks.
I think that the, the OHSAA meeting for parents and athletes for fall sports is like August 7th-ish, and that's when they pass this out to the kids and the parents. So I think-
Well, I, I was just concerned if they started at the last week of June, I mean, July or beginning of August, that we don't want to traffic it.
Pretty sure they're not going to start till August 1st.
No, absolutely.
Officially.
Should we decide on the fees tonight?
But, well, I think Mike just brought up band cap. You would know what band cap is, wouldn't you?
Does the band fall under the athletic handbook?
I think it should have-
Their handbook should be maintained consistent. Yes. It should be consistent with this.
Yeah, two weeks, they start in-
July, early July, I think.
I think 22nd might be the first day.
When do we start selling passes for the next school year for the family pass, individual pass?
They've been selling.
At the current price.
At the current price. Okay.
So if you make the tweaks, bring it back in July, I think you ought to, it ought to be consistent.
Yeah.
Ms. Perkins, is she going to say something?
I just, like, I mean, you're out, you're, so I can, if we-
21st of February. I think you did. Oh.
Maybe come up and be that.
Is he on vacation?
We did.
You can, you can just send it.
I'll be here.
Well, I'll talk to-
We have to, we have to-
The handbook, band handbook's not ready because it's-
But we do.
We do prove it.
But it's not-
Band handbook's not ready yet, right?
It's ready, it has corrections and, is that a?
Okay, okay.
I just take those next one.
Okay, okay. So it can be made consistent maybe with a few, maybe.
I think there's some support, it's in that, but it might not.
Okay. Right, right. Okay.
As far as conduct and whatnot.
Right.
Okay. So we need to table that, correct? Yeah, we have a motion to prove it and a second.
So what else?
Probably another motion to table, make a motion to table it.
I'll make a motion to table.
Let's go that way.
I'll second it. Okay. Any more discussion? All right. And we have a motion to table. Would you like to call the rule on that?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
What I should have done is had that long discussion and then said, no, we're not going to table it. I don't agree. I really want to snort right now. All right. 9A, we have a lack of service contract. We need a motion to approve that. It is for fiscal year 2020.
Motion to approve 9A.
Second. Any discussion?
This is our service contract for all of our accounting system and EMIS and everything we do with lack of service. Ask the board, please prove it.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, please.
Turn our email off or?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. All right, that motion passed. We have board policies. We're probably going to have to take these-
You could probably do A and B together if you want to.
A and B, okay. A and B?
To approve item 10 A and B items.
Second.
All right, any discussion on any of those?
Use, use the facilities.
Yep. And that'll be put in place July 1st, correct? And you probably have a lot waiting to-
Yeah, it'd be effective right when I show them.
Yeah, probably have quite a few waiting to go with that, huh?
I can't believe I need to put them on.
Yes. I heard that, actually. Was that athletic meeting? There was some waiting on there. All right. Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. All right, that passed. And we have a policy JOA and the-
It's sort of a discussion on this one versus them.
Yeah, it's going to be more of a discussion versus-
It could be action, it depends what you have.
Yeah, cause there's some conflict between this policy and then a survey that, um, the, the OES survey. That is gonna, that is, uh, you wanna give that, or you want it, Mrs. Perkins to discuss?
Well, we can discuss the survey if you like, but the, the item on the table is the fact that in the past, when we discussed this survey, it was decided that, uh, that it was a test that maybe had some controversial areas. So it was elected to opt in. And our policy allows parents to opt out on surveys. So if we want to, um, make them consistent, we would, the recommendation would be to eliminate what we said about the OH and let it fall underneath all surveys and become an opt-out.
Or if you want OHS by itself, then add it to board policy.
Yes.
That this one policy is an opt-in. That's the two options really. We see there, rescind the motion that was made in January that then we're opting out, you know, opting in, or amend the policy to, to, exception for IOES. So that's, I think that's, is that correct, Mr. Jones? Is that correct where you're at? Is that correct?
Is that correct?
I just said it, yes, yes. You summarized it again. Did we, the question before I, I started, and Rick somewhere, did you want more information about what you're trying to get added in, in terms of the OH? Because they had discussions about that before. Is there a five second summary real quick of... Or you guys, okay?
Is the issue just that we, if we wanna give the survey, we need to opt...
You want parents to be able to opt out?
To be able to opt out. So it's, it's really like a semantics issue in the way our policy reads?
Correct. Policy reads one thing and then a board resolution differently, so they're conflicted each other.
I don't think I need the brief thing if it's correcting a policy.
Who's gonna run home, which kid's gonna run home and say, I wanna take this, a test, I wanna opt in? So the test has some value countywide, so we want it to fall.
Okay.
And, yeah, it, it was a stance or position made previously that we didn't want people to take the test.
I understand. Cool. But John may want the summer, I don't know.
I'm, no.
He's probably familiar with it.
I remember, I think before.
Great. I'm gonna make a motion that we rescind the, um, previous board policy that this was an opt-in test and make this per existing board policy and make this an opt-out test. Or make all of our surveys opt out per board policy JOA.
So you're eliminating it essentially.
She's rescinding the policy.
I'm rescinding it. I'm rescinding that previous opt-in craziness. That's what I'm doing. Okay?
So we're clear?
Yeah, we're opt-out.
So all of our surveys in the district will be opt-out?
Opt-out, opt-out, yes.
In fact, policy JOA.
Correct. No confusion. Yes, no confusion. Any more discussion?
Just at any point, though, if something were to come up, let's say random survey A comes out. And we may have, well, never mind, never mind.
Go ahead, you can ask.
No, I'm good. I thought, you know, what if we've made that, would, could we at a later point change that to opt in if it were something that we felt per...
Any time at any case, if the board so chose to make an exception to any policy, I'm sure that we could get up here and do whatever we wanted to do.
But this way, we are in sync with our policies by...
You got it.
Okay.
And I, I think that you also have to understand Casey and the administration doesn't just wanna throw surveys out there.
No.
I think it was just the fact that this was controversial. So I think we'll guard against extraneous type surveys just bombarding our kids.
And the high school, your high school principal, your middle school principal, Casey, Tanya, and I all went to the discussion on this particular survey.
Okay.
It, it appears to be exceptionally valid information...
That's good.
That our children, that we need to get the data from our children. We got the report on the data from the county. It was, in my opinion, disturbing data.
Wow.
And what we're seeing anecdotally, particularly from the middle school, um, with the behaviors, more mental health issues. Um, I think that it's extremely important that we get the data from this survey because it, I'm hoping that maybe this will help lead us in some sort of direction with our guidance counselors, the admin team, of what in the world is going on with our kids. So that's just my personal opinion. So the more kids we can get to take this and say, what's going on at your house? What's going on in your head? Maybe we'll learn something. Okay, so. Any more discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes. Let's see, what do we have? Donate, treasurer's items. We've got some donations. We wanna take all those together, Mr. Jones? Motion to approve A, B, and C.
Second.
Discussions, wanna see donations with things?
Donations, we always appreciate. Thank you. The admin's tiff, yes, they have resources, spare our budget and allow their actual receipts and actual expenditures. And then temporary appropriations allow us to start spending money July 1st until permanent appropriations are in place in October. Everybody wants paid, so ask the board to... Yeah, so we get calculators too, yes.
We may not know this. We've had a motion, right?
Yes.
Okay. The Your Cause Alliance data, do we know what that is? It's under, the first one under donation. It was $40 donated to...
Your Cause Alliance? No, I do not.
It's probably alliance data, like their employees maybe like do a match or something?
Okay.
Maybe, because it sounds like, it's like Amazon, Your Cause, and you get to pick your people.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm just...
No?
But it's alliance data, so I wonder if that's just a corporate address.
Oh, it might be too.
And there, it, like, it's an employee that's put something in to donate for their school.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, and like, you know, like Target does for your school, or...
Okay, I just don't know for sure. You love that if you like.
It's only $40, I guess, it's curious.
Do you have any idea of Douglas Mendy?
I don't, but I can find him.
Any more discussion?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
All right, that passes. Number 12, superintendent items.
Try not to say much the entire meeting, so I can say quite a bit.
Yes, you've got a lot for this one, don't you?
I, I have in front of you a very large piece of paper.
You can go for it.
Uh, yes. And what I tried to do, and I need to just back up a little bit. Our, our building project had a timeline. And as all of us know, in the fall, that timeline got interrupted by a cultural study. It put us off for about six months. But what it also did was it put off the different phases down the line from when the high school and the elementary were to start. The other day, the core group got together to try to piece how we were going to finish the project, you know, without falling further behind. So it's very important that if you're gonna move Patasko and Kirkersville kids into the middle school sometime, that you gotta have the middle school kids out, which means you have to have their building ready. So where I'm going with this is the group, the core group, would very much like to, to have buildings turned over to our CMR, Robinson, who's still here tonight, by the way, uh, so that they can begin the construction projects to meet the timelines, to get students to move in or move out during a proper amount of time. And what we found out as a group is that in the school year 20 and 21, we need to make some modifications to this school's calendar. And tonight, I'm not presenting a finalized calendar, because according to our negotiated agreement, I presented to the union. But I came up with this calendar that would meet the needs of the construction project. I wanted to run it by the board tonight to share a few highlights. And if we're on the same page with that, produce something that we can move forward to get that taken care of, because it will adjust the schedule. And there are some follow-ups that administration will have to do, and that it will also allow the construction crews to know what the timelines can be. The calendar, what I did, I did a little different than a normal calendar, is the columns are grade levels PK through 12. So if you have a kid in the 10th grade, you're gonna know exactly what all their holiday is, when their start time, when their end time's going to be. You'll notice some things that are in red. In order for us to make the deadlines work, the quick summary is that we wanna move in the four or five students into the new building during the middle of the school year. So what we have to do is give time for that to happen. And then also the teachers of those students to be able to get in and set things up. So if you look at four or five, grades four and five, in red, it says January 8th. If you look to the right and to the left, all the other students are going to return after the January for New Year's Eve. Now, that's the last day of the break, so they'll come back that following Monday. But I'm asking for one additional week for the four or five building. That will give those teachers the time to come in. What it does, if you follow it down, means that those students, if we allow that to happen, will come to school five less days. But according to a higher revised code, they will still be 14 days over the required amount of time. Which still gives you, this year, we had seven calamity days. So we still had sufficient number of days. So you hear it a lot, that when schools are doing renovation projects, calendars need to be adjusted. So I really feel, in order to get these students in and have the teachers the ability to set up in a brand-new building, asking for those five days are within reason. We pushed the start of the school year back as much as we could, which, you know, may make some people argue a little bit, but, you know, we've had roads shut down right down Main Street. We've had, you know, the route, road a couple of years ago was being basically repaved. We can make it work when street fair is going on. I think we have to in that one year, look after ourselves and make sure that we can get the kids in. If you look then, the second part of this desire is we need to get the high school students out at the end of the year and have enough time to have an auction and to get all the extraneous junk that's left over out of the building, so we can hand it over to Robinson, so they can begin June 1st. If we wait to the end of the year, we're gonna push that another three or four weeks into the year, which means that when they finish with that, it's not gonna be an ideal time to move the next group back in. So what will happen, what the recommendation is, again, start of the calendar year is moved up, but we will end for grades nine, 10, 11, and 12 in the middle of May, which is seven days earlier than what we have done in the past. But again, all the, the state testing will be done. Everything will be finished, other than, you know, the end of the year. But they'll have the exams and things that the teachers will have. If you look at the blue, we're still above the state required time. Because we, we fade in, fade out a little bit earlier, that's why it's a little different at the bottom, in terms of the number of days that are left. Cause the freshmen come one more day than the 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. So that, again, maintains a very proper schedule. Again, the end of the year, some argue adding on days, I think that, again, that, that will make it work and keep us... You gotta remember, if we add six months to a project, a year to a project, general increases, 3% to 5% construction, you're talking on, you know, millions of dollar project, two weeks, three, that, that can add up if you push the project off six, six months. The only hiccup down at the bottom is that, again, that's only affecting those two buildings. The other students are following what is pretty much the same schedule that they're following next year. So you'll see that makeup days will still be at the end of the calendar year for everybody except for the high school. They will have to come in, if we're required to make them up, if we go below the state requirement days, then we will have to be, by law, make them up that following Monday, Tuesday, which will give us two less days, so we'll really have to scramble around to meet our deadline of getting the building over on June 1st. There's also one other thing, tighten this down. I put a day in there, an academic day, uh, February 12th. It's the Friday before President's Day. Currently in our negotiated agreement with the Teamsters, that is a, a day off. So we'll have to look at that. I'll have to address that day if the general idea of this calendar is approved. I'll either have to start one additional day early, which I was trying to avoid, because a lot of teachers don't like students there five days a week. But we can, we can make our starting day one earlier. We could reduce the winter break. But unfortunately, that year, Christmas is on Friday, New Year's Eve is on Friday. Or New Year's Day, I should say, is on Friday. So we would have to actually shorten, we would have to add a day for the teachers during the week of, of Christmas. But they would still have four or five days to get there. Then we could also reduce spring break. I already have one day, a trade day, in spring break week. So they would have to come to, they would lose a weekend and a day. So those, and then the last possibility is to have some contract language adjusted with the Teamsters. The easiest is probably to start a day early, and I'm not gonna say which is the hardest. But maybe, you know, when we discuss with the union, maybe we can have a trade day later on or something of that nature, if you go that route. But again, I know that Clay's stayed here, maybe if you want him, he can emphasize, again, the importance of turning the buildings over, um, so that they can maintain their schedule. And we, of course, if we don't, if we don't let them into the high school for renovation, then we can't get the middle school kids out at the time. So Patasko and Kirkersville elementary kids would be moving in the middle of the school year, maybe like September, October, somewhere around that. And they're changing building. Plus, when we move them into the middle school, we want that summer to lower toilets. We want to make the building useful for, uh, the younger kids. So all of it kind of goes together. So I guess the concept's out there. What, what's the thoughts? I mean, again, Clay's here, if you wanna ask him about the construction timeline, or, I guess I can keep going back and forth, but what are your thoughts? Can I push on with this?
I just have questions, but I think this is, I think you can push on with this. You said, um, my, most of my questions are, I have two.
Okay.
Around the, um, the high school. May 14th, did we look at AP dates, AP testing dates? Cause sometimes those are in the teens.
No, I'll be honest, I haven't shared this with anybody, other than to bring it to the board for the concept first.
Well, you said testing, state testing would be done, and so I, that was, when you said testing, it caught my attention then.
I thought it would be.
I know they're not at school, so it may not be an issue, but...
It would be close, I mean, it would be very close.
And some schools, there are schools around here that get out significantly earlier than us, so I think it would be...
I'm sure it would be. They might just have to go after school's out. My other question would be, in shutting down the high school, how much of the, is it, like, athletics are still going on May 14th? So there's a locker room that may or may not be still, still being used at that time for the teams that are outside. So if we're shutting down the school, will, will we have, I know we won't have anything else ready in May, but maybe we need to talk about that in the core group.
New lockers may be ready by then. They should be close, we're shooting for that summer. But I think that, I think the turnover, they're not gonna be able to do everything at one time.
Okay.
But that's something that Clay and I and whoever can talk about, can we confine one area? But they will be putting a, a fence around that for safety. I mean, there, there will be limitations to what access you're going to have.
I'm just bringing it up to, so that, that, that kinda stuff can get talked about.
The, the other issue I have, and I know, like, this is what we have to figure out, the testing, and I really think that we can work the testing out like Casey said, but I didn't pursue it, is that we may that year have to work out that all C-Tech seniors may participate in graduation, cause they may or may not be done with their C-Tech classes at that time. And I don't wanna hold somebody, I don't, I don't wanna guess if they're going to be able to graduate. They don't get their diploma that night anyways, they get an empty thing. So once they meet their criteria at C-Tech, then they can be given that diploma. So some of that I thought about, but yeah, I'll definitely have to work with Mike. But the idea is that we've gotta get the high school kids out, nine through 12, and they have to have the building, um, so that they could do $21 million of renovation.
That was my question. I'm assuming we would have graduation like May 7th or something? Is that the plan? Is that...
Actually, it's, it's, we have to have it all cleared out.
Yeah.
But we're giving them the building June 1st.
Oh.
So we literally can use it till then, but we don't wanna leave it, we won't, I mean, if we're all scrambling around May 29th cleaning it out, it's not gonna work.
Gotcha, okay.
But Rick, we have talked, we can leave the gym all set up, have graduation on Saturday, and that's the only thing left.
Gotcha.
Get the custodians, and it's out the next morning.
Okay, okay.
So if we can work out, um, I guess I'm asking ahead of time, I won't be the superintendent, of course, ahead of time that, you know, you're gonna have some calamity day issues. I've just shared it with, with Casey. You know, you're gonna have to keep a close eye, because that does include two-hour delays. Hours now includes delays.
Right, right.
Well, and I think it's important to just note that it's a one-year thing.
Yeah, right. It could be painful for a year.
One year, but it's a necessary evil.
Yeah.
I did leave that the teachers work here as 186. That's what the contract is. I suppose we have a negotiation period, you can modify that, but normally you don't reduce hours and without reducing salary or days, but can't say that won't happen.
AP testing is off-site. And I think, if I was looking at the calendar, maybe that last day traditionally is the, this year was the 16th, next year it's the 15th, I think that year might be the 14th.
So it'll be that week?
Yeah, but we do it all off-site anyway, and that last day, there is a...
You gotta remember, we have that group. They're not getting the building on the 16th or 17th or 18th. We just need that time. We can be clearing out two-thirds of the rest of the building, and the area that you need to have for those students, and we can be totally devoted. But we, we need to get the majority of the stuff out as soon as we can, get it set up for an auction.
And the teachers will need time too to pack up.
Yeah, yep, that's the thought. There, everybody's working 186. So when I say these kids are less, the teachers are gonna be obligated to come in over Christmas break, those five days that we're adding for, and we can't have them coming over break. But the same thing for the, the high school, those teachers won't get off May 14th. They will be work, work packing and getting over to the new building and unpacking and all that.
Yeah.
And the four or five building, can we move a building in two weeks?
Well, again, that building's gonna be finished. And a lot of that's gonna be new stuff, cause it's a brand-new building. And so is the high schools, so again, most of it's gonna be new. We may take over a few old things, but the idea is not to take over a bunch, I used it before, junk. We have a lot of old couches, chairs, things like that, that we'll sell. Old lockers, sell. And, uh, so not as much moving over. So yeah, I think we can.
We're telling them to prepare for that, as a judge, this is how you know.
We need nice, clean buildings.
The bigger concern is moving, when we complete the middle, or when we complete the high school, moving the middle school completely over to the, the middle school.
New building.
Moves out, yeah, moving into the new building, plus moving an elementary back over to that building. And there's a lot of concession, I think, on both of our sides, giving up time to try to squeeze us in. So the, the district's got a large burden too on the moving side of it. And, you know, we're really kinda grasping at straws, because we don't know what we're doing in the high school yet, but we know it's gonna be a lot of work. So we've reduced our time frames, they've reduced their time frames, try to make up this six-month period and avoid winter moves, and that's the whole goal.
I will share with the board again, we don't only have to move the kids, but it's also gonna affect all of our bus routes. And having us change in bus routes in the middle of the year would be horrible. We're, we're going to Patasko this week, but then we're gonna start dropping you off at the middle school.
You'll be careful.
That's gonna take a lot of planning.
Well, we're already doing that with the four or five in the middle of the year. Well, we're already doing that with four or five in the middle of the year.
We are, but it's, but four or five is already a four or five building.
Right.
Instead, they will, yes, they will be changed, but they'll all be doing it together.
So I hesitated to say this earlier, but, because this, we have to do this, or something to this effect. But whenever we come, you come to the board about adding extra calamity days, there's always this concern of losing instructional days. Which obviously, for the fourth five, we lose five instructional days. So, you know, it's a one-year thing, we have to do this. But my bigger, you know, in thinking about that, the four or five staff at, when they're at Aetna, needs to be really proactive in preparing the kids. You're talking about, because they're going to be in a new school. That first week is going to be just like the first week of school at, you know, at the beginning of the year. So they're going to really lose a whole other week, looking at all the new stuff and getting used to the new rules and, you know, the new schedule of lunches or whatever, if that happens to change. So as much of that we can do while they're still at Aetna before they move is important, because we wouldn't want to lose any more than the five days of learning.
And that is a great point, and that's a point that Mrs. Perkins has been trying to make and is in his calendars, we need to start earlier to get the number of hands-on teacher days to be increased. So you noticed that I did not extend the calendar for the rest of the group. They're actually ending May twenties, or March, yeah, I'm sorry, May twenty-fifth. Um, but we're adding to the beginning of the year to try to account for the teaching time. And that's why one of the options to make up that February 12th is at the beginning of the year, so we don't lose that time. So it's a good point. So I, I'm just going to, I didn't need a vote tonight, just, I just want to acknowledge that I'm going to be working on this, and then hopefully we'll be able to make sure that it's fitting with what the construction people want. Uh, my goal will be to, if next core meeting or two, share it with them, make sure it's what we've talked about. Then it would go to the teachers' union. It would then, we'd have to make a, the final decision on that February 12th date direction, and then come back to the board. And again, because it affects graduation possibly, and some extra time, I think that we should approve that probably either August or September this year, so we have two calendar years set and people know what they're doing. We may not have the graduation date or place, as Mike would say, but we at least know the, the schedule.
Right.
Okay, any further questions? Clay, do you have anything else to add, schedule, timeline? Appreciate you staying. Uh, the second thing I have down, and I was encouraged to put this down, so I'm looking right at Tanya. Uh, I know that you went and heard some things about some vape detectors, and they have some grant money, and just kind of want the board to hear a little bit about that.
Right, so basically, we have a safety grant that we were awarded this year. We had plans to spend that money on some different things, including the trauma kits for the different classrooms, but due to a, a donation from partner, from bank, we've got, we've received those elsewhere for free. So then the conversation came up that perhaps we could put vape detectors in some of our middle school and high school bathrooms. Um, the two popular ones that are currently being used in schools, they're, they're very expensive, but they, um, will send a message to the phone of whoever we decide gets that alert. Any elevated noise will let you know of a fight going on in the doctrine, that there's some disturbance going on. It does detect gunshots, it does detect smoking, vaping, and the newest one out on the market does, um, detect the THC oil. So we're presenting that as an option. It would maybe in the future require some policy changes if we decide to build that route, but we wanted to bring it up as a potential possibility for next year.
So the point is, are you okay with that? If you are, then we're going to hit the policy committee to make sure that we have policy in place, and hopefully get that either started in July with the first reading, maybe August the second, so that these can be used.
Yes.
Quick question.
Yes.
Uh, how much, I don't know how much money is in the grant, and how many that can buy us? Um, and are we buying for the current buildings or the future buildings? Or if we have the money, can we buy the extra for the extra bathrooms in the newer buildings when we move?
All great questions. Um, we do not have enough to do every bathroom in both the middle school and high school. So in talking with Ryan and Tan, we talked about picking the most used bathrooms for now, and definitely let's see how it works.
Okay.
We've heard good reviews, but we want to make sure that it actually works the way it says it's going to work, before we put thousands and thousands and thousands into something. So I think in that sense, what we're just doing over the current building, however the safety grant is renewable, so we'll apply for it again next year. So it may be potentially something that we can look at again when the new buildings are built.
Thank you.
We did save some money on hand drivers, so we might be able to buy some.
Funny guy, isn't he, Rick?
So, so we're good, we'll, uh, policy committee, we'll try to pull the meeting together in, in July, because that will be our main topic. I think there are a couple of schools already doing it that we're going to take a look at. We're obviously not going to copyright, but, uh, we'll, we'll get something put together and, and have some ideas and move forward. Okay, sounds good. Uh, the last one that I have, again, is something that Rick can help me explain. Uh, but I was going to ask for a special meeting, and the reason I asked for a special meeting is that we have found that, that there's nothing in our policy right now or any regulation that we have that gives a superintendent the ability to hire, um, in between board meetings. Uh, so if we have a vacancy or we need to bring somebody on that's, uh, working for another school right now, then I can't really do that. Well, I can do it, but it wouldn't be right. Uh, so what we want to do is make it right, we either have to hold a special meeting right before the, the deadline in July, or as Rick would present, he put this together, uh, simply that this would be a short-term approval, so that we can do that between now and, uh, really the end of the, the summer.
So it's set up as basically, our old policies, and what happened was, had language there in SupTech and higher staff in emergency to, if it affects the operation of the school district. So teacher leaves in the middle of the year, you hire somebody in between board meetings. Some reason that language did not get carried over into our new hiring policies, which I included in, on your chair drive. So, uh, on top of that, it's hard to say that in the summer it's emergency. Um, so the prior year, if we've approved the resolution asking, allowing him to hire staff usually before a one-month board meeting. But since that language is not in the policy about, I've asked that this resolution actually go through September fifteenth, which would cover the beginning of school. But also, we would like to have this language added to board policies. And that's on the board of one visit, that gives us two meetings to get it done. So there'd be a first reading, a second reading, and it'd be in place before September fifteenth, uh, like it used to be. Um, so the resolution at this time is asking you to allow him to hire staff in between board meetings, so we don't need special board meetings, and that you get to, you ratify it the next regular board meeting. It goes through September fifteenth, from tomorrow through September fifteenth. And also look at adding that language to our existing hiring policies, so that we don't necessarily have it more proven. So he has that ability, especially when the school's in session and teacher leaves, that he can hire someone right away versus wait for next board meeting.
Thank you.
So you need a motion for this?
Yes, we do need a motion for at least a resolution, yes. Then the resolution's included in the motion.
And if the policy committee is meeting for what we just spoke about, they can also discuss this a little bit.
Right, motion approval of the res- resolution as printed?
Second. Any more discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. All right, that passes?
That's all I had, didn't have an attendance update, but we'll say that screening's taking place, and that's been quite exciting. Uh, but we'll, we'll bring you numbers as we get closer. And Mrs. Perkins is keeping an eye on the grade levels and the teacher-student ratios. Uh, we're a little tight at a certain grade level, but most of them are pretty good.
Okay, all right. Request to speak on non-agenda items, Teamsters four thirteen, and, and Southwest Looking Education Association. All right, we need a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. We are adjourned at nine thirty-nine PM. All right.
So I will not be at the artifact meeting next week.